The first item of business is the adoption of the agenda for today's board meeting. The March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five agenda has been distributed to all members. Are there any corrections, additions, or changes? Hearing no objections, the agenda is adopted. The next order of business is the approval of the minutes from February twenty-sixth, twenty-five, which was a board meeting, and March twelfth, twenty twenty-five, which was a work session. May I have a motion? Thank you VP. Second?
Second.
Thank you Board Member Amanda. Any additions, corrections, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion to approve the February twenty-sixth and March twelfth, twenty twenty-five minutes carries. So we do have comments for tonight, so I just read a short script and then we'll invite the person up. We now open the floor for public comment. Welcome to this part of the meeting. Please note that during this time, the board is here to listen. This is not a period for discussion or immediate responses, but an opportunity for us to hear your perspectives. We value your input and may need time to process and research the issues raised. Concerns will be addressed at a future meeting or by the appropriate staff member as needed. Under state and federal privacy laws, we cannot entertain comments or questions about specific school personnel, including board employees. We employees, we respect the privacy rights of all individuals, particularly in public meetings, and are bound by legal requirements that prohibit discussing personnel matters or sharing details about individual employees or related concerns. Please be assured that such matters are taken seriously and will be addressed through the appropriate channels and our, or legal counsel, excuse me. Please direct your remarks to the board rather than the audience. If the meeting becomes unruly, the board will pause proceedings until orders restored. Alternatively, if you prefer to speak not to speak during this time, you may submit written comments, which will be included in the board minutes for transparency and record-keeping. Public comments will be limited to a total of thirty minutes. Each speaker is allotted three minutes, and the board clerk will manage the timing to ensure fairness and efficiency. Now, the board invites Prince Proff to the podium. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Good evening to all the board members. I'm here to speak on behalf of Planned Parenthood. I'm not just coming to you as a community leader, but a parent who have children that go to Schenectady City School District. One of the things I just want to talk about is my relationship and also Planned Parenthood, also having access to educate some of my young people about sex education. I think that's very important. And while we don't agree with everything, we're not supposed to agree with everything. We won't agree with everything. I think it's a responsibility for us to find what we do agree about, right? And sometimes that's harder to do versus to look at what we disagree about. Some years back in two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, Ellis Hospital came out with a study that showed one of the top five reasons why people in Schenectady are unhealthy. And one of those reasons was teenage pregnancy, right? And which actually birthed the movie Cradle. I made a movie called Cradle that was funded by the county Schenectady Foundation to actually talk about and learn more about how our young people get impregnated and how they end up in these situations. And Planned Parenthood played a major part of that. I remember having conferences at the high school with our ninth grade academy where we talked about how to love yourself and gave these students the resources that they need to actually build on prevention. And we actually went from number two. We was actually second in the state for highest teenage pregnancy rates. We actually dropped to about number six. If I'm not mistaken, number six or number seven. Please don't quote me exactly on that, but I know that we did drop. We dropped four points in the last probably couple of years. And the thing that I want to say is that, no, we're not going to agree on everything. But one thing we can agree about is that we all want to focus on prevention. And that's been the focus of my relationship with Planned Parenthood, is to be able to get to these students before they end up in these situations. That's very important for them to have access to not only the knowledge, not only the resources, but the education. My daughter is currently a peer educator at Planned Parenthood. She works for Planned Parenthood as a peer educator. She goes every Wednesday, and she goes there for about three, about two, three hours after school, where she also helps and educate other peers. And I think these things are very important because a lot of our students are come from backgrounds where they don't always have these resources. And while yet we may have our different views and everybody has a right to their view respectfully, I think it's important to see the bigger picture that we are in the midst of lack of resources. And while we have tree here in Planned Parenthood that has been in our school district for years, I think it's important that we maintain that relationship. And that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. We have no further board comments, so we will continue with our agenda. And again, thank you, Mr. Proff. We will now begin with comments from our superintendent.
So good evening, board, staff, and community. This week, we had two extremely productive administrative meetings. Just this morning, our executive leadership team came together for a book study, and we're doing some intensive work on strengthening our team. This afternoon, the administrative council met, and we reviewed our strategic plan and took a closer look at some of the data. Our school leaders are setting short-term goals that we will review in the next five weeks. Both meetings were very productive with intentional work to improve our outcomes. Last week, we had superintendent's conference day. All members of our district teams participated in professional learning. It was a great day. Thank you to all our presenters, as well as all of our faculty and staff for embracing the opportunity to grow. I met with our superintendent advisory council last week as well. Students provided feedback on the city's comprehensive plan, which covers future support for students as it which covers future support or just advocacy within our community as it relates to economic development. The students were amazing. Shared things around just the work that needs to be done within our streets, providing activities for students in the community, playgrounds. So it was a very informative opportunity for our students to engage in those conversations. We also, just to let you know, I have my next coffee chat tomorrow morning from six to seven, from seven to eight. So welcome to anyone that looks to kind of engage. That concludes my comments for today.
Thank you, Dr. Coto. And now we will invite Board Clerk Michelle Eden to provide details regarding the upcoming board elections.
This year's annual budget vote and board member election will be held on Tuesday, May twentieth. We have two board positions up for election this year. If you are interested in running for the board, I have petitions with me here tonight. See me after the conclusion of this meeting. They are also available in my office here at five thirty Liberty Street. You can also email me at EdenM@SchenectadySchools.org or call me at five one eight three seven zero eight one zero zero, extension seven six nine zero seven. All of this information is also available on the school district's website. Starting this voting season, our website will also have a poll place finder to make finding your polling location easier.
Thank you, Board Clerk Michelle. Board members are invited to share updates, including school liaison information, announcements, celebrations, and details on district events, community activities, and agenda items. And before we start, I do want to welcome SBR Janice to the table. Welcome. Yeah, you're welcome. And we will start our comments today with Board Member Kathy.
Good evening, everyone. I have just a few things to report. I attended the Living in Today sessions, some of them, three of them, at Mount Pleasant and found that most informative in terms of what the students had an opportunity to hear about and experience. So I know that there are people here who have more involvement with it. We'll tell you more about it. I want to mention that the, and I intend to try to fit it in, the play at Schenectady High School is, shoot. It's just a school of rock, school of rock. And that will be from April third to fifth. And I would encourage everyone to come and see that because I always find those very worth seeing and interesting to see. And the other thing I will mention is that the Schenectady School District Educational Foundation is having its annual presentation gala on April eighth from five thirty to seven thirty, eight o'clock, whatever time it finishes, at Profter's in the GE Theater down there. And we'll be recognizing along with other events, the teacher of the year.
Thank you, Board Member Kathy and Board Member Jamaica.
Hey, y'all. I mean, now when I say it, it's like not even fair because you're just expecting it. You're just used to it. I was at Lit. I was one of the presenters because some of us do that. We got to spend the entire day with eighth graders inside Mount Pleasant Middle School. I have a very long list for y'all. I'm not even going to try to read it this year. I think this is my fifth year presenting at Lit. Ebony Velmar is absolutely amazing. On April eighth, I will be at Page Elementary doing a presentation for the parents there. And last but not least, Ramadan Loubharaq. To those that are celebrating Ramadan this year, Eid is coming up this weekend. As someone who celebrates Ramadan in solidarity with a whole host of individuals, I'm looking forward to Eid. It's a wonderful day in celebration to be inside the mosque with folks in that moment. And then we, of course, have the day off on Monday in recognition for Eid. And those are my comments for today.
Thank you, Board Member Jamaica. Board Member Amanda?
I have no comments.
Thank you. Board Member Vivian?
No comments.
Okay, thank you. And Vice President?
Not on the comment. And I just have one. I've been to several events, but one that really stood out, they all stand out. I don't want to say like that. When Mount Pleasant Middle School had a Black History Month event, it was, I am going to use the word.
Amazing.
Thank you. It was absolutely amazing. The students were great. Different adjective. The teachers who led the chorus, they had like the different skits, who the kids who sat. I mean, it was just, it was unbelievable. It was one of the best Black History Month celebrations I've seen in years. And kudos to Mount Pleasant. Those teachers were on point in the auditorium. Principal De Fazio, the same. It was, it was, I had some, I went to the two thirty one, and then I went to the nighttime one. And then they had, you know how you know me. They had the, you know, the dancing. Yeah, so it was just a great time. Kudos to Mount Pleasant Middle School. Amazing, amazing job. So that's all for me today.
Bernice, I apologize.
Yeah, sure.
Walter Simkins Services are this Saturday. Viewing at ten, services at eleven. Details are kind of everywhere on social media, and I know Michelle was going to share it up as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for sharing.
I think with that, Jamaica, just our thoughts and prayers to our families and our community, just given the loss. So I mean, let's keep our community in our prayers.
Thank you. So we are now going to move to the policies. Since this is a second reading, we're just going to vote on the resolution. So I move to approve policy eighty-two forty-two, the Health Education Family Life Sexual Health Resolution for adoption. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Is it eighty-two forty-two or forty-one?
Eighty-two forty-one. Thank you. Eighty-two forty-one. Thank you, Board Member Jamaica. Second?
Second.
Thank you VP. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion to approve policy eighty-two forty-one, the Health Education Family Life Sexual Health Resolution carries. The next item on the agenda is the treasures report. Are there any questions or comments regarding the treasures report? Hearing no further discussion and no questions, the treasures report will be placed on file for audit. The next item on the agenda is affirming values of Schenectady School District Resolution. I move to approve the affirming values of Schenectady City School District Resolution for a second reading and adoption. May I have a motion? Thank you. Board Member Jamaica, second? I'll move that. Board Member, Bernie.
Any discussion?
Yes, this is what I wanted to talk about.
Go ahead.
My generalized concern with this resolution, and I really want this to be an open discussion amongst everyone, is the, sort of the picture that we're painting, you know, the impression that we're giving. I know, you know, I was told way early on that, you know, being on the board is not supposed to be political at all. And, you know, given that we'd never had a resolution like this before, everything that's going on in this day and age, and now we're having it, I understand it's to try to put some people's fears at ease. Like, I understand that, and I think that in a different way that would be appropriate than passing like a formal resolution to say almost like, we don't care what the President of the United States is saying and leading our country, even though so, like, more than half the country voted for him. We're going to like kind of dig our heels in and say that we're going to do this anyways. And I, I'm concerned about the way it's going to make us look. And also, it seems like maybe our focus isn't in the right area. Like, yes, we need to do all these things. I don't ever want to make any, I don't, I hope that nothing I ever say ever says that I don't want us to be diverse. I know sometimes, you know, it's hard to talk about this without feeling like people are going to think that I don't want diversity. That is not true. But I just want to make sure that we are going about this the right way and not just sort of like making a resolution because of everything that's going on in the media and in the world today, just to kind of be defiant.
Thank you, Amanda. Any comments?
I will add to that. I do not believe that this resolution paints a picture of anything that we already have not been doing as a school district. This is nothing new. So for this to be in a resolution, to me, it does seem like it's it's a political statement sanctioned by the district and it's an act of defiance when we're supposed to be, we're supposed to remain completely outside of politics. That's what we're supposed to do. As an aside to that, the February twenty something this time last year, February twenty twenty-four, we had a meeting where we went over a presentation where we went over our students' reading levels and their math levels, their proficiency in science. Sixty-three percent of eighth graders at that time were three or more grade levels below proficiency in math. Only five percent of eighth graders were mid or above grade level. Twenty-seven percent of students' grades one through eight were three or more grade levels below proficiency in reading. Where is our resolution reaffirming our commitment to helping our students achieve academic excellence? Where is that resolution? We spend a lot of time and energy focusing on things that are not going to help our students succeed once they graduate high school. We are not focusing enough energy, in my personal opinion, on things that are going to actually help our students close the massive gap in proficiency for these important topics. So this is something that the district chooses to dig their heels in, that's fine. But if we're going to dig our heels in on this, then we need to dig our heels in on things that truly matter, which is the success of our children.
Thank you, Board Member Vivian.
So I don't have anything prepared to say. I do agree with Board Member Vivian in regards to digging in our heels. Absolutely, I think that's what we're here for. But I think right now, introducing not perhaps the right time, maybe not the idea is the focus on this particular resolution. I get the understanding that it appears, it comes across as a political mover statement. However, I think, like we've said, this is in full support of all things that we do as a district and what we believe in and what we affirm. So to me, I think by putting this resolution forward and voting on it and saying, yes, we fully intend to continue to support all students, how they learn, when they learn, and all of those things that we do as a district. We're welcoming all walks of life, all people. We continue, we need to continue to do that. So I find it somewhat difficult with the political view aspect of it. I understand that the president has made an executive order that is impacting all school districts and boards and so on and so forth. We're not the first one to have such a resolution. But I think that being the city of Schenectady and what we stand for, that it's very important that we stand on something versus falling for anything because we're not making a commitment to our families, to our students, and all the people in our district. So it's just my two cents.
Thank you, Vice President. Board Member Jamaica?
I was happy to see this resolution, not because I think it's a political statement as much as it is exactly what it says it is, a reaffirming of our values and acknowledging the importance of addressing environmental factors. Our children, based on data and research, cannot be successful, do not learn if they are not in a welcoming and inclusive environment. So we, by all means, by putting forward this resolution, are showing our commitment to every single child and to their families by extension and lifting up and including the policies that list our commitment, right? So it's not just some fluffy piece of language, but it also supports the policies that this district has decided and that guide our work. As for the timing, let's do it every single year. Let's make sure that our families and that our students are fully aware that we are committed to the environment to which they learn in because without it, we will see a decline. And again, this is not just my opinion. This is not just passion. This is data and research, years and years of it, that let us know what is necessary for our students to be successful and to increase the graduation rate, the reading, the math, and all of those things that are a part of their success, but not their totality.
Thank you, Board Member Jamaica.
My only, I agree with you, Jamaica. I know, I know. But I do agree with you ninety-eight percent of what you said. We had a commitment to having a welcoming and a safe environment for our students last year, the year before that, the year before that, and the year before that. And our students still tested the way that they did. So I'm going to, I'm going to reiterate my initial point. Yes, our students deserve and they need a safe and welcoming environment, but we've already committed to providing them that. And they're not where they need to be as a whole. They're not. So I don't see where this is the answer to improving that.
Well, we know it's not just one thing. And also, thank you for lifting up the fact that we've not fully implemented what is necessary for all of our students to feel welcome, for all of our families to feel welcome, and that we have work to do. This doesn't change that. It actually reminds us that we have to do more, that we've not done enough. Because if every student had everything that they needed, then those success rates go up. We know that it is a multi-tiered system. We know that it requires a lot for our children to be successful in all of the ways that it needs to show up, not just with state testing, which even our State Board of Education is having questions about, that that testing does not necessarily indicatively show us their level of intelligence. So I agree with you. We've had this type of policy before, and we need to do more because if it had been fully implemented, then I think we'd see greater success.
Okay, then. So meet in the middle and codify that commitment in this resolution that specifically addresses that. Codify it now.
So I actually believe that there's a line there that specifies our commitment to having rigorous work, right? That our expectation is for our children to be able to do well academically. That language is already in here. So we're being specific about the environment because that is the focus. The focus is about the environment, and that's what it's about. You can agree with it or not. I don't think that it's changed.
My, really, like, it's a very general question that I have about this is like with the policies that we have and just the things that we talk about all the time, our strategic plan, our, the three pillars, like, all of this stuff. Like, we are already doing that. So to me, it's like, it's simply just like,
Enter your class number.
What is, what is the resolution for? Like, what is this going to change? Like, I mean, like, what, is it just a message that we're sending? Like, I guess I'm truly just confused, like, why do we need a resolution to do, to, like, to me, it just seems like we're trying to prove a point against, like, all of the pressure that's coming out right now, like I said, with the presidential executive orders and everything. Like, why do we need a resolution for this when we literally talk about it all the time? It comes up in every single board meeting. We have multiple presentations on all the things that we're doing already. So, I mean, in general, for me, it's like, I just don't think we need a resolution for this because we already do it.
Why do we celebrate Women's History Month?
Why do we celebrate Women's History Month?
Why do we celebrate Women's History Month?
To acknowledge women and their accomplishments?
Because they too often have been left out of the picture. They've been ignored, have not been acknowledged.
And that's something that-
And so we talk about the importance of relationships with our families and being able to communicate. This is another way for us to ensure that our families, that our students, that our community understands where we stand. Expecting someone to know that you love them without saying it is ridiculous. So, yeah, it is necessary for us to say the things over and over again and to stand on our principles and our morals publicly, not just privately, in my opinion.
Vice President.
Okay, so I think, all right. So in review of this resolution, right, I think that we might be mixing a couple of things. Yes, the executive order came down. Yes, there are other districts that are also taking, you know, particular stance in regards to DEI and so on and so forth, in support of all families. I think the issue still stems, kind of going back to Board Member Jamaica's point, that we have families in the district because we didn't, we didn't have this. This wasn't crafted or drafted before some of the families started to come and say, hey, I'm scared, and what do I do? So I think us affirming this and putting it out there to say, hey, families, we've heard you, and we're still going to continue this work, and we're affirming it in this particular resolution is the reason for it, and not necessarily to say, you know, forget what the president has done and what executive orders have come down because we want to take a political stance, but more for us to be able to show that support to the families that have expressed concern based on that culture. I don't think any of us here wants to bring this in and say, oh, this is strictly a political move and we want to make a statement. Families have literally reached out concerned and out of fear. And I think this helps to further push our dedication to what it is that we already do every day.
Another question that I had too was, did we, I don't remember seeing it in the emails, but did we get any type of, like, attorney approval on this, just to make sure? Because I don't want to set us up-
Yeah, yes. Yeah, I wanted to mention, yes, I want to mention, you said exactly. But I do want to give very broad examples of what, you know, Halani, when she mentioned the community. The community has reached out about, and you guys know about one of them, and I'm not going to say it publicly, about a certain thing that a educator said. SBRs have shared some things that are very politically charged. There have been parents and students that have talked about immigration, I would go like that. There have also been some, particularly students, but some parents who've talked about identity and worried about their students that are LGBTQ. So this, there's a lot going on. I mean, we don't get always the emails, get calls. We get, we have forums where people talk about, so there is a lot of concern. Then the other piece about the attorney, and actually, I was going to mention that very briefly. When we had the PD, the professional development for, with Douglas, or with Douglas, I said that. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I know, right? But he, you know, we talked quite a bit, and this is also with Jay from NISBA. And I'll make it very broad right now. But we talked about the executive orders, not verses, but also the state laws and regulations, right? New York state laws and regulations. So I think it became very clear to many of us that we are still abiding by New York state laws, and that's what our attorney said. And that was also what the NISBA attorney said is because, and then I can send you all the information that he said about the executive orders because I don't have the lingo that he has. But in essence, we, executive orders are not necessarily, you guys can help me out, is not necessarily like in stone because many of them are in litigation right now. But New York state law is. So I wanted to just mention that. And I don't remember, I think I might have recorded it. So if I did, I'll send it to those that didn't attend because it was very enlightening, actually. It was really a lot of great information. So I did want to mention that. So definitely, we shared this with Douglas. And we also had not, at that meeting, we didn't specifically talk about this resolution, but yes. So we wanted to make sure that we are aligned. But from my lens and the responses that I had with-
But from, from my lens and the, the responses that I had with the parents, it's, and again, I don't want to reiterate what VP and Jamaica said, but it's really what they said. You know, so, it encaps, encapsulates many of our policies, the DEI policy. We have, we have a lot of curriculum policies though, and I just wanted to kind of address that too, because we've had a hugely intense, in a good way, um, teaching and learning, presentation and math, presentation about the plethora of things that we're doing to address exactly what you're talking about, because we all agree, like, we need to hone in on that. But when we had that teaching and learning, I mean, they really shared everything. But going back, and again, I don't want to reiterate what they said, but the research does say, I mean, over and over again, that school culture and climate is like the number one factor that really helps support our students. And school culture and climate does have to do with many of the things that it says here. And again, we can, we can disagree, agree, and I get it, because like you were saying, I agree with, with some of the things that many of people are saying, but then there are some things that I just really want to make sure that, um, as a group, we are mindful of the fact that we want to continue this work, but we also want to remind our, our community that we are still about this. Like, it hasn't changed. Might it change later in the future when, I don't know. But right now, based on what our lawyer said, we abide by New York state laws. Okay, so I just-
Did he say anything about, like, the potential federal funding? Like, I, I had seen, like, recently, just to kind of give you some context, I'd seen that, like, Saratoga's doing the same thing. And it's all over social media, and I was like, reading through some of the comments, and there was a lot of backlash for them passing a resolution just like this.
Yes.
And a lot of it, you know, it could just be ignorance, because it, it was talking about, like, we'll say goodbye to your federal funding, and I don't know, like, putting this in writing like this at this point in time, you know, I understand we're abiding by New York state laws, but is there a potential for this to affect whatever federal funding we get? Because we have this in writing, and it was after his executive order.
Yes.
It feels like we're-
Target.
Cutting off our nose despite our face.
Or it's always the right time to do the right thing.
Well, we are doing the right thing, even without the resolution.
We are. But the resolution is the right thing also.
It not if it's gonna, I mean, there's things in here just in general that I don't-
Families, teachers, students, like, community members, like, we either are about our commitment or we're not. And if there's, the one thing Schenectady's good at is a fight. New York state owed us money, we went and got it. So if my concern, if my concern as someone fiscally responsible for this district to make sure our students have what they need, okay, great, we'll figure it out. We're gonna fight. We had the president of the SFT stand up and say, "Yo, if there's a fight coming, know that we're here and we're ready." That doesn't mean we don't do what's best for our students. This is an affirmation that we're gonna continue to do what's best for our students. And if we didn't say it, I don't think it prevents us from being a target, because we already have the policies in place.
There's a way to say it without using all the words that are in this, though. I think someone said it, maybe even you in the beginning, said, "We are about all the students, all the families." So you can say that without using all of these words and potentially getting us in a bind and having us to waste time, energy, resources, potentially more money, fighting something that we could prevent just by not passing this resolution. The way it's worded, at least.
I don't think it's a fight to stand for our families. I don't, I don't think it's a wasted fight to stand for our families. Because what I see in this resolution is us standing for our families. And I don't think any of our families would think it was a waste of time for us to pass this resolution, knowing their identities, knowing their culture, knowing their race, that when we see them, we see them, that, that we see them fully, every single part of them. Not that we just say, "It's all of us," but we literally specify that we see each and every one of them in all of their intersectionality, in all of the ways that they show up, to be able to be their full authentic selves every single day. And I say this, sitting at this table, as a bisexual black woman that grew up poor on Hamilton Hill. I know what it means to me, I know what it means to my family, I know what it means to the number of communities in this city for us to be able to pass this resolution. It's important. And I think I've, I've said all the things that I need to say.
I don't think she was saying it is not, is not important to stand by our families. That's certainly not what I was saying, so I don't want words being put in our mouths. What we are trying to get across is the verbiage used. Number one, it potentially puts us in a bind. Number two, we're not saying anything that we aren't already doing. We're not introducing a new concept to the school district, we're not. So we're going to reaffirm things. Then I would also like to see us, just as ten toes down, reaffirm the need to improve our students' academic success. But nobody at this table was even implying that our families are not important, that our students are not important, that their feelings of safety is not important. No one is even implying that or insinuating that whatsoever.
I've had a number of discussions about this at the NISBA level, because I'm one of the co-chairs of the DEI Committee. And we kept the name DEI Committee, even though a year ago, this started to rise up, shall we say, before the election, well before the election. And the committee has moved, not moved, it, it, it's emphasizing what we are all about. And I have the pin on now that, that it's all about. It's called SOAR, Success Equals Opportunities Plus Appreciation Plus Resources. And it shows a young person, you know, arms out and soaring, basically, uh, as a, as a, um, symbol for success. And that's what we're emphasizing at this point. In our most recent discussion, we said, we do not really need to throw this in the face of the federal government at this point in time and bring on the possible reduction of funds. No one knows for sure what's gonna happen. So, while I commend Jamaica for the fight with, uh, that we all took on for advocacy, and she testified for and so on for the monies that we've received from the state, it took a long time. And I would hate to see us lose the federal monies that we have now, Title I and all the other ones. They're, um, IDEA monies. We have, the one that's still in question, even as I sit here and we are going to talk about a budget, is, is the money for food. I don't, we don't have the time to, to spend doing that at this point. It's not that it's not a worthwhile fight and we can do it conjunctively, but I, I feel pretty strongly that we just do not want to add to the aggravation, uh, of the federal government at this point in time, because we don't know how they're gonna react. So, that's where I'm coming down. All of your arguments have been expressed all over the state. I can tell you that. And, um, and people are choosing different ways, but, uh, and we don't know which way it's gonna come out. But I, I would rather not lose in the present for what we might gain further on down the road. And when we already, as has been pointed out, we have been talking, I've been talking about inclusion as part of this DEI Committee particularly for, for four plus years, more than that. And I've been the co-chair of that committee for, uh, NISBA during this time, so, and still am. So that's, uh, where I'm coming from.
I think we're ready to vote, unless people have other comments. Good, okay, okay. So, um, I'm gonna do a roll call for this, alright? So we'll start to my left, okay? Um, Jamaica?
Aye.
Aye. And, Board Member Kathy?
Nei.
Board Member Amanda?
Nei.
I'm an aye.
Aye.
Nei.
So, the resolution does not carry, because it's three to three, so the motion to approve the affirming values of Schenectady City School Resolution fails. And that's because we're tied, just so everyone knows, alright? So we are going to move to the consent agenda items. The consent agenda includes items considered routine and approved together in one motion, unless a board member requests an item be removed for separate discussion and vote. May I have a motion to approve consent agenda items nine A through M? May I have a motion?
Some.
Thank you, Vice President. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Amanda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion to approve consent agenda items nine A through M carries. So we have no unfinished business to address at this time, so we'll move to the next agenda item. Our first presentation is by CFO Terry Gullwiek. He'll present on the twenty-five, twenty-two, five, twenty-six budget. Welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Excuse me, everybody?
Hello.
Alright. Again, as we start all our presentations, we will have to look quicker.
Is that working?
Yes.
That works. Alright, our taglines and our- I don't think it's very serious. I had it working before everybody showed up.
It's always that way.
Um, again, our budget overview, we have no new updates with the state budget, have not been passed yet. Um, yeah, as your discussion just took place in regards to some of the grants, we have not had any guidance for any changes. I know there has been cuts to grants throughout the state, um, but not related to education, but also related to the state, State Department of Health. So, um, as of now, I have no updates on those, and I don't want to, you know, try to pretend like I have any information, but as of now, we're going forward as if nothing is going to be cut creating the budget. Um, we will create a budget as we move forward with that possibility and see what we would be able to support if my funding was cut from our budget. Um, our twenty-five, twenty-six budget obviously maintains all our current programs and staffing levels. And as we continue through this process, we are looking to add some more positions throughout the district on that we are able to support, and I will briefly talk about those tonight, and then more in detail on the ninth, and then with budget adoption. We're still in that process, but I wanted to provide you with where we are currently standing and what it might look like as we move forward. Does it click? Click. Alright, so currently, we're looking at a budget of two hundred and ninety-one million, um, ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-two, which is a thirteen point four million dollar increase, or a four point eight one percent budget increase from our prior year budget. Um, this is a breakdown of our revenue sources, of how we are going to support that budget. Um, our state aid figure, which we have slides I shared previously, which is currently on the government, uh, proposal, and I will, you know, break those down again for you at the next slide. Our taxes, um, our charges for services and other items throughout the budget. Um, basically, our state aid makes up seventy-six point six percent of our budget, and our taxes make up twenty point four percent of our budget. So the increase in revenue is the, uh, thirteen million three hundred and sixty-eight thousand that we showed previously. One thing I do want to point out is the fund balance line. Um, our current fund balance and the current budget, you know, with the ARP and all the federal funds we were able to utilize, we were able to use some fund balance. In our current year, as of now, twenty-four, twenty-five, I don't see us using the ten million dollars that we designated for expenses this year, for current year expenses. Um, but, you know, moving forward, um, I don't think that's gonna change much. But next year, to balance the budget, we are looking to use five point one million of fund balance to pay for current expenses in the following year. Where do we come up with those savings during the year? Obviously, we budget for, um, some of our worst-case scenarios. We budget additional money for special education students, we budget additional money for vacancies. Um, and if those do not get filled, if we do not have any special education students that need additional, uh, tuition costs and other parts of the budget, if we have savings in expenditures, staffing, and everything else. So basically, our fund balance is growing and utilizing savings we have in the current year to use for next year expenditures, if necessary, we're able to balance our budget. As of now, we're looking at like, basically, a five point one, which is less than two percent of your budget, uh, like, five million dollars, wow, it's a lot. But when you're looking at a two, two hundred and ninety million dollar budget, it's less than two percent of your budget. And that will still maintain us at the four percent that it required and potentially fund other reserves that we have also in addition. Click.
What is happening today?
Yeah, as we mentioned previously, um, I, and I shared this with you, so this is nothing new to this. Basically, the current funding levels of where the New York state governors have proposed for our district with the changes after Rockefeller Study, uh, which we do not know which ones are going to be implemented, but this is what they're proposing. There are some changes to note as we get data in the current year and as we have a snapshot of our current revenue or what the budget that the governor is proposing. You know, like, our foundation aid, that may drop a little to what these numbers mean, because basically, they're based on an enrollment number that we provide at our BES Day in October. And things change, and we may have less students for what we projected based on enrollment figures. You know, with our numbers being at nine thousand ninety-two hundred, if you just have a hundred or two hundred kids, that could mean a difference of two million dollars. But I projected that in our budget process that we have that accounted for, so if the number does come in a little bit less in foundation aid, we are aware and, uh, prepared for that. In addition to our building aid, as you can see, the governor's proposal, we have twelve million. We are providing aid, you know, on our current projects that are already going through, so we are doing the proper paperwork that will be submitted prior to the final budget. We're getting early funding, now we all submit it, so our building aid will increase from the twelve million that we're currently getting up to like about fourteen million. So those numbers are reflected in my budget, but they're just not reflected yet on the governor's run. Click, please. Um, just some other aid that we get. So overall, as you can see, our current twenty-five, twenty-six budget compared to our current actual, not the last year's budget, but our current actual figure that we're getting, which is higher than our prior budget, um, of like two hundred and four. We're getting additional aid based on additional transportation aid, building aid that was not part of the budget process when we were preparing it. Um, so we're looking at an increase in aid of about nine point four million. Next slide, please. And then, once again, the graph of showing our, um-
You didn't say click.
No, there, there, something's going on here, I don't know, maybe you can't hear me at home or something, but we'll figure it out. Um, and again, our foundation aid, uh, again, you've seen this slide before, you could just see the steadily rise based on the fully fund, uh, funding of the foundation aid in the phase in for the last three years. Next slide, please. Um, I just wanted to point this out, because I know it's come up in the past. Um, you know, our tax levy, we have not determined if we are gonna be able to go out at zero. That is my prediction, or my hope, um, based on the current funding levels that we have. As I showed you our revenue sources, is that a zero percent tax rate? But if we were, um, if we determine it was necessary, and as our union president pointed out, that, you know, a, a loss of revenue, we're all aware of that. Um, if we were to raise our taxes, we would be able to go up to two point seven four percent. We generate one point four nine million, and that would basically only need simple majority vote, uh, of fifty plus one. Um, and then the breakdown of taxes, like, when I have the tax revenue source, you know, you saw the dollar amount, fifty-nine million, but I'm telling you, the tax levy is only fifty-one million. Where's that other, um, eight million dollars come from? And we get our star relief, and then we get our payment in lieu of taxes, and then interest on our late property payments, and then utility tax of three million dollars. So that makes up the fifty million dollars of revenue source and taxes. It's not just the levy, but it's those other additional funding of taxes. Click, please. Oh, back one. There you go. This is just a pie chart that shows the breakdown of our expenditures, uh, by category. Um, as you see, our general instruction makes up majority of our, uh, budget. Um, that's basically the educational piece of twenty-seven point three percent, and our benefits of seventeen point five percent. Our salaries are basically fifty percent. I'll provide that in the next meeting, it breaks down the categories of the different expenditures within each. But for today's purposes, I just wanted to give you an overview of what our total expenses are by category. Click, please. And not to go through, because we've been through, um, this previously, but these are the numbers, the breakdown by departments throughout, and you know what's within those departments, because we shared those previously. Um, you know, like, our community schools, all of our people related to those positions are in the innovation, equity, and engagement. Next slide, please. Click. And then all the business office, staff, uh, our legal, human resources, communications, um, these are all basically just- These are all basically district office staff and the related expenditures to those. And they're all pretty much, you know, increasing basically contract obligations and any additional things that we've become aware of or anything that we are able to eliminate. Click, please. Once again, our buildings and grounds, our centralized services, our safety team and any, you know, special items such as our general liability insurance, school dues, refund if we have any on taxes. And then our BOSI's admin capital SRF that we have to pay for BOSI's for the, based on our RWA and enrollment in our district to the Capital Region BOSI's to manage their programs. Click, please. Breakdown of our administrators, you know, principals in each building, curriculum and instruction, planning and accountability and our professional development. We do provide a lot of opportunity for our teachers and administrators to go on conferences. So that number obviously increased and working with the Office of Teaching and Learning, identify programs that are going to exist district-wide and provide those opportunities to our instructional staff. General instruction has all of our teachers and related expenses in regards to that and our special education and our occupational education. Included, I just want to point out, our general instruction education, our, you know, charter school tuition payments have gone out basically from like four-million, four-point-five-million up to about seven, eight-million dollars projected for twenty-five, twenty-six, based on the number of students enrolled in the charter schools and tuition we are required. Occupational education has those are our CTE programs that we provide for our students that we send them out to the Capital Region BOSI's and other BOSI's if necessary. Next slide, please. Our adult ed programs, Washington Irving program, summer school and night school. Those are all broken down by category. We've gone over what's included in those programs. And then our instructional technology, you know, our computer assistant, you know, so high number, six-point-five-million. Those are basically all the services we provide related to instructional media and IT programs. We get a lot of those services through the Capital Region BOSI's, but also includes all of our Chromebook purchases and every other equipment related to IT, hardware, software and items like that, that we also get state aid on some of those numbers. Next slide, please. Student support services, you know, these are all our counselors, health services, psych workers, social workers and our SSS. I don't want you to be alarmed and you probably see a difference. Wait, are we cutting? It brought to my attention, we are not cutting. It's just a matter of, you know, where we have them categorized right now currently and we're working on that to identify them. They were in ARP in the previous year. We did bring them over, some may be assigned to the building, so they may be showing up in instructional. We moved some down that may be district-wide, so they're in SSS personnel. But everybody is included in the budget. I don't want you, I noticed that after I prepared and sent out the slide and reviewing them. I'm like, okay, that was brought to my attention also. Everybody's in this budget, like don't, I don't want you to be alarmed. We're just still identifying account numbers change and you put in the wrong position when we run reports, but we're still going through, as you can imagine. You know, those changes that happen, we still have some who made the grant this year at the start of the year. So part of their salary is still being paid out in the beginning of the year in the federal funds, but we do have them identified in the general fund and they will be recognized more clearly at the next meeting within those categories where they are. But they're in there, they may be in district-wide code or in the individual building code rather than broken out, so we can actually see the costs associated with them. But they are definitely in there. And then our co-curricular activities in our athletics budgets, which includes all our coaching and fees to competitions and stuff like that. Next page is our, you know, support with our transportation, our benefits, debt service payments on our capital projects that we have borrowing money for, not just the current projects, but previous projects that will be following off, then our inter-fund transfers. We have a special ed, you know, summer that we support our summer program. Part of it, they only support eighty percent. We support the other twenty percent, our general fund. And then capital outlay, that may increase to two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. The state proposal is every school district is allowed to do a project up to like a hundred-thousand dollars without public approval. So we are able to do that. They approve it through the budget process rather than an extra different proposition vote. So hopefully that does go up to two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars because to be honest, a hundred-thousand dollars, you don't really do much anymore nowadays with the cost. But we always identify a hundred-thousand-dollar program that we're going to do. That does increase to two-fifty, we'll just increase that line item and take an additional amount out of it. We do get aid on that the following year. So we'll just increase the aid on that at the ninety percent. Then capital projects, that seems to come up within our current capital projects where there's like an emergency that comes up that we always have with our age of our buildings. I like to identify some money for those purposes only. And then when we do those, we'll let you know that, hey, we have this lineup of capital projects that we identified. I dropped it to one-point-six because we had a lot going on last year with this building. We're keen, knowing that we're starting to phase of the projects. If we had additional money, say something like, you know, we're at twenty-million, not knowing where the bids would come in and they come in at, say, twenty-one-million and we take some things out of the project, we determine that something is really important. We have money, support it in the general fund that we'd be able to slide over to support those capital projects that we don't have to borrow for and that we would have that into the budget and have those improvements done at those buildings that we're currently working on that we may not have been able to support. But where we were standing last year with the amount of money we had available, ARP and other stuff that we were able to do, we were able to identify that. We haven't spent all that this year either, so I don't want you to think that people are just, you know, throwing out additional money at the capital project that's not being able. But there might be some things that come up that like, hey, we really would like to have something like windows that we haven't been able to afford through the capital project. But if we could add like two, three-hundred dollars, two-hundred thousand dollars with the windows and make it look nicer and better and more efficient with energy and all that, then let's take this money that we had available and slide that over to support that. Next budget. Click, please. Contract for excellence, we have to go through this every year, requirement of New York State. I don't know if this is still going to be a thing next year, but everything's going on. There's only like twelve schools within the district that are required to do this. But we have to make the presentation on it. It was enacted in two thousand and seven and eight. It is part of our foundation aid, it's not additional money. But we just have to identify things that we are using this money for to basically establish additional accountability on us to show that we are making smaller class sizes, that we are increasing students' time on track. We're using part of the money for the restructuring of our freshman learning academy, you know, things like that and teacher and principal quality. So we had to identify seventeen-thousand dollars, seventeen-million in twenty-three, twenty-four. They increased to twenty-four, twenty-five and this year is too to be determined, but it might be around twenty-four-million. So basically, we just identify, like for example, kindergarten is not a requirement in New York State, but we identify that we have kindergarten classes. So we use that money for C-F-R-Z for kindergarten. And then smaller class sizes based on our budget, we're able to hire more teachers, identifying a contract for excellence as those teachers that we are hiring. So we use that money for those purposes. And if anybody has any questions in regards to our contracts for excellence, you're welcome to submit any questions on last talk and we'll respond to you in that way. The propositions as of now, currently where we stand is, you know, obviously the budget vote and then we have two Board of Education seats being vacated by Vivian and Kathy. So I'm not saying they're running yet, I don't know if they're running yet, had not been determined, but those are the two seats that are up for election that will also be on as a proposition on the budget vote. Click. So things that we move forward, some things that we are waiting on, that we're currently working on. Obviously, the final twenty-five, twenty-six New York State budget. I heard, I think the due date was the first, but I think it's been pushed back to like the tenth maybe that they're projecting. Hopefully that doesn't drag on before our adoption, so we have a true understanding of where we are. Final revenue expenditure review, you know, still working through, working with the departments, working the buildings, they all submitted their budgets and working with the different various departments of ELT to identify what we can support, what we can't support, what's a wish list and what is a needed basis. Our health industry, you know, obviously, everybody's aware of the industry of the health insurance. We have our health insurance committee meeting tomorrow afternoon. We will be setting the rates where we think they should be, what they are, if we're able to use some of our fund balance. But we are looking at between a five and ten percent increase possibly for our members and for the premium, basically. Now, the district will, obviously, if we contribute eighty percent of a premium, twenty percent, it's not a true, you know, ten percent on top of the premium payment. So we'll have that all broken down and see what that is. Transportation bids, we are going out for transportation bids on a lot of our routes. Hopefully, we get a positive responses to that, that hopefully we'll be able to reduce some of our transportation costs. Our BOSI's commitment, we're still working through all the BOSI's commitments, all the different programs that we run through BOSI's, not only our special education, but all the services we receive through BOSI's, all the products, curriculum development and things like that we're currently going through. And again, special education services, you know, identifying students with Andrea's team, make sure we have the tuition set aside for any outside placements and current placements and any staffing needs we may need within the district. And again, the twenty-four, twenty-five ending fund balance, make sure we are good with the four percent. Make sure we're good with what I'm supporting the following year budget with and making sure that we are good that we could actually fund some more of our reserves that we currently have established and just add more money for future budgets when that necessary funds are needed. We have a board meeting next April ninth. Our budget adoption the twenty-third and then our hearing on the seventh and then the budget vote on May twentieth of twenty-twenty-five. And we'll have all those places identified as a back. Any questions? How fast, I know. Kathy?
I have about three.
Nope.
I mentioned food earlier. The, um, that seems to be the one people are most concerned about in terms of the money that is coming from the federal government already and the inability, this came up at the Adelina X School Board Association meeting I attended last week, the money in the state, there would not be enough money to, in the state to furnish what makes up the difference that is provided by federal at this point. What, what are we talking about possibly doing if this were to happen?
Right now, we have community eligibility participation. All of our students eat for free, breakfast and lunch.
That's...
If, yeah, if that does not happen, you know, an option would be to charge. We get automatic certification, like seventy-seven percent of our students, the automatic certification through a SNAP program, Medicaid or Medicare or whatever program they... So I don't know if that is also going away. So not knowing, I can't project us to support.
We haven't done any yet.
Yeah, we have a fund, we do have a fund balance in our school lunch program that could support two or three years' worth of expenditures.
For food as opposed to equipment or...
Yeah, well, obviously, we would not buy the equipment. We already are equipped pretty much, pretty well in all of our schools. We are providing it without buying any new. So we would support the food purchasing and still allow our students to eat free because that would, our fund balance would be able to support. I would imagine the state would pick up a piece of the portion. They do contribute part of it now, but it's not to the level of the federal.
And they couldn't make up the difference this way?
Yeah, no, and I don't think we would be able to make up to give every person free meals. Every breakfast and lunch is ten-thousand dollars a day, you know what I mean? So the undertaking of that expense alone, we could look at it and could build it in, but then how would we support that? But again, if we have not funded our reserves, if we make that a priority, we'll take two-million dollars and don't fund the reserve, but use it for food, transfer that to the school lunch fund and that would be something that we could identify and actually come up with those numbers next meeting.
The, uh, speaking of the fund balance, what, I've forgotten what our fund balance finished at at the end of twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four.
I presented it before, I believe, off the top of my head, maybe like thirty-one-million dollars for the reserve, fund balance. And then we have the four percent of the current year budget as unreserved. And then we had the ten-million included, so about forty-five-million, I believe, that's what you...
But we, okay, so we're anticipating, you're anticipating possibly using five-million of, um, of that fund balance in twenty-five, twenty-six and ten-million, you, you...
We're not going to use it.
Think they're going to use it in twenty-four, whatever, yeah, twenty-four, twenty-five. I have a good, could be a mouthful here. Okay. I recall several years ago that the comptroller came to visit us and anytime you were using any fund balance as part of your... They basically, you know, deemed you for, for doing that because you're not living within your means is their, is their take on it. So as long as we recognize that that's where we are.
Yep. Yeah, we're well aware. We know our funds, our reserve funds could be utilized more and add more through those as we deem necessary. I think when he actually said that, you were below the four-percent threshold even.
Even.
So, you know, we're at the...
Or right at it.
Yeah, we're at the four percent.
It would even be at it if you're below it, it's a problem if you're above it, it's a problem.
And I think they would have a bigger problem if we're raising taxes. We have not raised taxes in six years, so we're not generating more revenue and have an additional fund balance sitting out there to not, you know, so we're using, utilizing a zero-percent tax increase, utilizing our fund balance to offset deficits rather than making cuts and supporting programs that we can and understanding that the reason why we have those additional amounts of fund balance is that we're not able to get people hired to fill those positions. And I've been saying that since I've been here, like if that truly happened and we were totally full with all our positions that we have open, then that five-million would not be there for future budgets. But right now, like I said previously, if we could have what we need now, why not do what we can now for where we are to support what we need to support rather than saying in three years, we not, and let three years go by and not have a position that we want, that we can do right now?
I just was pointing out.
Yeah, no, yeah, we're aware. It came up before, it's like they don't want you to use it, but they don't let you be over four percent.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it's four percent, not below, not above.
And they won't give you that answer either, they'll just point it out and move on.
My third, thirtieth health funding, the facilities we have. It's not with regard to our relocation or anything, there's concern. And I don't, do you know?
Here in the district, we...
Not just in our district, I mean, I'm talking, I'm talking statewide, nationwide.
We don't provide any funding for school-based health funding. We don't give them any funding, we just give them space. So I think maybe they're offset by what the services they provide to our students. Maybe they get reimbursed through the government somehow. But we don't pay school-based health funding at all in our district. We just have...
Okay, because I don't recall the specifics, but it sounded as if it might have implications for our two...
It might have implications for our students.
Well, our two locations, basically, and then obviously for the students.
Probably more for the students who would use those services. But as far as the district paying for anything that is related to school-based help, the only thing we provide is the space. Am I correct with that?
So if that funding is coming from the federal government...
I'm correct with that, school-based help. I know we don't pay them any, but...
No, they have a grant.
They have a grant, they get a grant.
Kathy Pocle had it in her presentation as something she wanted to increase, support for school-based help.
And if she has the money, fine, but I'm saying if it's coming, some of it's coming from the federal government.
Yeah, they're grants.
Changing, then it's, then, you know, it could be going away and if we're not, you know, we're not contributing at this point, we don't have anything to contribute with that puts that at risk. That's, that's my only point, I don't have enough details about it.
Yeah, and again, it's nothing like we want to support that, you know, I don't know. You have to pull something else away to support it, basically how it works.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I just have one. Can you explain the Board of Education money that's there? Because we're volunteers, so if you can just...
No, there's, there's things like board docs. We have to pay for the service for board docs. We have board clerk, which, you know, the retreats that you may go on and be a member of NISBA, New York State School Board Association, anything related to that, travel, stuff like that.
The election, right?
No, we don't get paid.
The election, when we do the election, we have to pay the poll people, we pay the poll people. And then there's ballot that we're getting through BOSI's. They're helping with the process, identifying where people live and where they should go to vote.
The only elected office.
I try to get, I try to get some money in that for that. Carlos, don't mean no.
Don't do that.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
There are some school districts.
Very few.
Four of them?
Five.
Five, the big five.
Yep. Okay, our final presentation is from the Office of Teaching and Learning led by Dr. Lorna Chisholm and Director of Health and PE Athletics, Jason McCall. They will present the K through twelve health program.
And Jason, as Jason comes up with Dr. Chisholm, I just want to recognize we did approve our Assistant Director of Athletics, Keston Finger, who's in the back.
He's brought on, we don't have faces.
Yeah.
Why don't we have faces next to...
Good evening. Board President Farah, Superintendent Codel, board members, community. So it works great. Hey, Jason. So we are here to present on the health program, K-12 here in Connecticut Central Schools. Jason McCall is our newly appointed, I think within the last two to three months. Jason McCall is our newly appointed, I think within the last two to three months, as Director of Athletics, PE and Health. So as he immerses himself into our, the work that we're doing here in the district, as well as lifting up the work that we're doing around athletics. He's going to share with you a little bit around what we're, what we've been doing with health, education, and those really big key components that we embedded to our curriculum, so.
Thank you, Dr. Chisholm. Good evening, all. Pleasure to meet some, but to see others. I will get you through this presentation very shortly. So we have our about us, artistic vision, tagline, and our values. I'm pretty sure we're pretty good there. Be sure this is working. You're about to set me up. Okay, there we go. We have our pillars as well. I don't want to, I'll let you read and follow through from there. We already know that. So it's the nitty gritty. So our staffing. So, oh. This is new. Not working with me though. That's all right. We have six teachers across five buildings. We have three at Schenectady High School, one in Oneida, one at Central Park, one at Mount Pleasant, and one at Washington Urban Campus. All of our teachers are working on professional development, so AED, first aid, CPR. A lot of our education went to the HABURD Conference, which covers health, PE, and recreation and dance. And we also working together, all of our coaches certified period in health and dealing with one of these wonderful subjects. So why is health important? Again, it equips our students with the knowledge and the skills to make informed choices, promotes healthy behaviors, addresses critical issues like mental health, substance abuse, and healthy relationships. We saw during the pandemic, the push for SEL, even remotely, excuse me. Also improved, improved student well-being and academic success. All right, so our health mandates, these are actually New York State mandates. So I'll peruse the beginning part. I won't read that, but I will read the standards because they are very important. So our standard one is a commitment to personal health and fitness. Students will have the necessary knowledge and skills to establish and maintain physical fitness, participate in physical activity, and maintain personal health. Standard two, safe and healthy environment. Students will acquire the knowledge and ability necessary, necessary to create and maintain a safe, safe and healthy environment. And standard three, resource management. Students will understand and be able to manage their personal and community resources, which is huge here in Schenectady. All right, so we split our curriculum up into middle school and high school. So currently, we start doing our health curriculum units in seventh grade. So our curriculum focus for our seventh graders are child sex abuse and exploitation prevention. So we cover Aaron's Law. That's basically a law against sexual abuse and exploitation prevention, education, schools for students. So that's something they put on the books rather recently. Also alcohol and drugs, sexual abuse and exploitation prevention, education in schools for students. HIV and AIDS instruction, mental health and socio-emotional learning, again, SEL training. So the takeaways we learned from our students when they're taking the curriculum is describe the basic structure and functions of human body systems. So our young ones are starting to learn how their bodies are working. You know, often saying the PE spaces, when you start smelling sour onions coming from gym, so it's around that time. So those are the leading conversations that we have to attach to these. So those are, you know, sometimes offline, but they're necessary for our students to know. Identify the harmful effects of alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs. Explain how eating nutritionally balanced meals and snacks promotes health, something that we've been doing in not only the PE and health space, but also with our athletes, with their after-school snacks and such of that, stuff, stuff like that. Describe the physical, social, and emotional indicators of healthy people. Again, part of the SEL push is teaching our young ones to identify what are healthy habits, what are the mental structures that they need to, to be stable in this environment. So again, this is part of the COVID post-game pushes, I call it, and it's something that's sticking with us. So I definitely appreciate, you know, the SEL check-ins we have with our students. Identify responsible health behaviors and demonstrate strategies to improve or maintain personal health. This is a big one that we're working to push through. Our students understand what it is to play in the phys ed space. They understand what it is to play recreationally. By how we kind of bringing this home and incorporating our families and our loved ones to not only take part of what we're learning, but also take part in what we're doing. So as the kids go in with the information, we're hoping that they're spreading it amongst their family members, friends, loved ones, whatever the case may be. And we're working to push those healthy products and promotions out to all of our families and constituents. Identify common health problems and indicate how they can be prevented, detected, and treated. That's a biggie. One of the things that I've started noticing in some of our classes that we're starting to look at the nutritional guides on the back of all the contents that we're eating and drinking and stuff of that nature. So we're having those offline, online conversations in some real spaces. So even with some of the student athletes, I say like, you know, that's not smart to have whole McDonald's before practice. I'll, good luck, but better you than me. So, and last but not least, set a personal health goal and track progress towards its achievement. So I love great curriculum, kind of mirrors the same thing, but at a different level. So it's more of an in-depth, based off the stuff they covered in seventh grade. They stayed aligned with the curriculum. So again, our focuses are alcohol and other drug substances, cancer prevention, CPR, AED instruction, HIV and AIDS, and mental health. And our takeaways, they describe the bodily changes that occur during adolescence. So as they're transitioning from seventh grade to eleventh grade, they can kind of tell you, hey, I'm, I'm starting to, you know, sweat profusely and I'm starting to get hair in places I've never had it before. So those are interesting conversations and to reflect on that with our eleventh graders going all the way back to the middle school curriculum, it's kind of been huge for us. Describe a variety of problem-solving, communication, stress-management skills to address health compromise and behaviors such as fat dieting, alcohol, tobacco, other drug use, early sexual involvement, and violent behavior. I know that's a loaded potato, so to speak, but a lot of those are things that we're encompassing now as we perverse into this heavy technological age where we're posting stuff on TikTok. Kids are starting to do fat dieting things, and we're trying to meet and beat that. So we have our kids with all the necessary tools around them to meet and beat that challenge. Predict our decisions regarding health behaviors have consequences for self and others. I think we do that as educators on a day-to-day. This just hits us in the health realm. Describe the interrelational goal of social, emotional, and physical health during adolescence. Part of that's covered during the SEL chat, unit, but we like to make sure that we bring it back around so we can figure out at this age, how those effects can be positive for us. Explain how lifestyle, family history, and other factors are related to causing prevention of diseases and other health problems. In my family, we're really heavy diabetics. My mom is a diabetic. Thank goodness. I'm not there yet, Lord willing. But those conversations are needed to be had, especially when you have a lineage of children that have heart issues or families have heart issues, heart disease, whatever the case may be. So realizing it for them and lives in this real space, they kind of have been bringing that information home, which is a good thing. You know, parents sometimes like, ah, leave me alone, but this is the stuff that we're looking for, for our kids to have and champion as they move, move and progress. So cross-curricular health topic. So again, health and most of our stuff is across-curricular. It just figures out how you can put those different places in other spaces, so to speak. So for example, in math, have students use a nutrition label to make healthy habit inferences and determine how much fat, total sodium, and sugars are in their meal portion. So that we can component, we can combine that with the math component, so that they're not only doing math with the sugars, the fats, and all that good stuff, but we can also bring it back to the health. So now we can make it not a numeral question, but we can actually make it a verbal questions where they can read it. They can kind of break it down a little bit, and then they can use both sets of knowledge from math and health. ELA, analyze teen issues in contemporary literature such as mental health or substance abuse and discuss the importance of seeking help. For example, using the Hunger Games to teach media influence, which I thought was a big one. And again, those touch along the lines of mental health, substance abuse, and SEL training. Science, explore the connection between environmental and personal health. Was the impact of air quality on respiratory health or the role of water sanitation in preventing diseases? Being, I'm a downstate from New York, I preferably do not like the work in the Bronx because it actually has the highest, well, actually the worst air quality pretty much in the world. You would pretty much not figure that a place that's probably, you could probably fit the Bronx in a corner of Schenectady somewhere, but you would just like not see the things that are happening, you know? I don't want to get into it. It's gross, but you get the idea. Programs and curriculum resources. So one of the big things about working at Schenectady, we have numerous resources. One of the ones I'm glad that we actually attached to, and she's actually working, I want to say across the district, is the addition of Ms. Amber Stevens. She's a substance coordinator. She's been working tirelessly with the athletics department. She's been working also with some of our student athletes offline, and we hope to incorporate her in our health lessons moving forward. Again, she's working with the populations to help and procure kids and make sure they're making smart decisions. We have various programs and activities throughout the district. So we have clubs, we have sports, and interest groups to kind of keep our kids engaged. So sometimes when there's loose and idle time, we find ways to get not into good things. So part of my process here has been vetting some of the systems and the curriculum, which we would like to employ and use here in Schenectady. So we started vetting HealthSmart. I've used HealthSmart in New York City. It's pretty much aligned with New York State standards. I like to keep a lot of the health lessons very vanilla. I do not get into, you know, personal issues. I do not like to use non, you know, the, the verbiage has to be correct. So we're taking it from a scientific end and we're not using street lingo. We try to almost meet and beat that, or I've done that before. But I want to keep it very vanilla, just in respects to people's beliefs, religions, and backgrounds. So I don't want to overdo, but I want to give them just enough so they end in a. We're also incorporating Brain Boost Health and Quaver as a backup resource for our health and PE teachers. Brain Boost is a good way to actually chart and track using their system, which we can log in, we can see what students are engaging, we can see what they're looking at, what the topics are, and see what the completion may be. And if I'm talking too fast, blame my mother who's from Florida.
What is Quaver?
Oh, I'm sorry. So Quaver is a K through five curriculum that we, that Kim Pillar actually looked into using last year. I'd like to incorporate this year and give it a full go, just so we see where it is. It's kind of an insulated part for our curriculum. So our main curriculum would probably be HealthSmart. And Brain Boost and Quaver are kind of insulators. Quaver is pretty much K through five, so our little ones in K through five are insulated, and Brain Boost is K through twelve. So we have double up on everything. And last but not least, if it gives it to me, there we go, questions?
Before we begin with questions, I do want to remind the board a few things to ensure that everyone has an opportunity, because I know this might be a really hot topic. So to participate, please limit your remarks to three questions or two questions with a follow-up. And then once everybody has, you know, has shared their questions, we'll limit it up to comments that people have comments or additional questions. Okay, so we'll begin. Board Member Kathy?
I was reading an application for a scholarship for another organization, and it was written by a young woman whose comment was this. It made me laugh out loud, but I thought about it, thought it was true, and it was this, that seventy-three percent of students know more about the body, the anatomy of a frog than they do about the anatomy of a woman. So that made me think about what I've seen at some of the cross-section, the, the vendors who participate in conventions for school-based activities and so on. And I saw one, it was probably the size of this table. It was, it was an anatomically correct human body that they could take things out and so. If, if we could get one of those donated, I think it would be useful. I mean, I say donated, I had no idea what it would cost, but, but they cause a lot, I mean, they're using it in the medical schools and, and colleges and so forth to teach it, anatomy and whatever, for medical students and so forth. But, but it would really let people have some idea of what they're having in there. I don't know if that's something that could be explored or not, but I just thought I'd mention it.
Do you have a question, Board Member Kathy?
That's the question, and could we explore a part of it?
Can we get a doll?
Answer, yes.
SVR, Denise?
I just wanted to ask, I probably shouldn't know as a student in high school, but what I've observed is that we only have one health course out of all, all of our four years. Which I don't think is very efficient, because I feel like these are some of the most important years to learn about substance abuse and sex ed and, and human anatomy and all of that stuff. So I was just wondering if we have more options or courses to keep awareness about substance abuse and sex education and et cetera going within all four years, other than just one.
The easiest way I can level that is when we do scheduling and programming, it goes based off of what you need more than, if you want to, no, continue, it's, it's kind of a mixed bag, so to speak. So technically, you only need one credit health, so it's a point five and a point five, so it's basically either half year. That's something that we can explore, like we've done other things. We're looking at other clubs and interest groups and stuff of that nature. That's something that we can roll out and explore if the need and the one is there with the students. So let's definitely connect and we can put a survey together of what topics you want to cover. Then we can find out which ones are kind of taboo, which ones we like, which ones we don't. That's something I'm more than willing to help with.
All right.
Sure.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, SVR Denise. Any other questions? VP?
So just looking at slide twelve with the programs and the curriculum resources, it sounds like, it looks like there's quite a bit going on, and, and you shared quite a bit of, like, what's happening, right? In our buildings and the districts and the supports that we have for K through twelve. So I guess my question is, is are there any gaps that you think exist currently in the ability to provide public education for our students, and if so, what are they?
I don't think there's gaps. I think it just needs to solidify. So we do have the right people in the right places in the right spaces. I think what's been happening, and please just indulge me in this one, because there hasn't been consistency. There's always been the start, but it's never been the follow-through. So I'm not going to come in here and reinvent the wheel because I'm too old and not smart enough to do it. So what I will say is I'm willing to meet people where they are and let's have the conversation. So my initial coming in was that we could create our own curriculum. I moved that to, moved to align to something that aligns totally with New York State, so we're in compliance in that, that round. Now, what we do with that curriculum, we can augment, we can add, we can change. It's kind of one of those things when we buy the curriculum, we don't have, we're not bound to it strictly. We can augment, we can change. I was actually talking to Mr. Bonsu Ward, who was trying to stay in, in support for this meeting, but unfortunately he had to go. But the same thing with him, like, we talked about his ELL learners and his health class. So he's augmenting all the stuff that we have to engage with those children. So thinking about just health as a course, but not incorporating all the other things that are needed, you know, are we working with our elves, we're working with our kids who have deficiencies. Trying to make sure that we're scaffolding it the right way. I think we're in a good space, but I think that teachers need a go-to playbook. I'm using all my athletic uniforms. I'm sorry. But they need a go-to playbook to pull and pull from. And unfortunately, the leadership hasn't been there. It is what it is. Hopefully, we have some direction there.
VP? Board Member Jamaica?
Am I correct in understanding that health class is only in grade seven and grade eleven?
Currently coming in, that's what I'm understanding, yes.
And follow-up to the question about whether or not we have enough. So I guess I'm just asking again, that only in seventh and only in eleventh, then that is enough for our kids with their needs?
It's a duality. If you're looking in terms of like programming-wise, they programmed the kids to make sure they have what they need. So they have to have a health component in the middle school. In some districts, they even do some sort of health components at the elementary level. Yes.
Keep going. I'm dropping out.
So, but I think at the high school level, it's really confined only because there's only half-year sections. Again, I'm willing to engage to meet where we need to go, where we think we need to, so I'm going to tap you for my survey as well. Student representative, but I believe that's it, but I'm going to give it away to Dr. Chisholm.
So one of the things that we wanted to make sure that we were at bare minimum compliance, bare minimum, was compliance with part one hundred regs. And what does the state say is the, you know, what do we need to, or what do we require to, to deliver in terms of instruction for all the content areas? And that is part of the regs, which is why, you know, I wanted to make sure Jason did include a slide in terms of where other health topics come in to other courses as well. And how there's this cross-curricular piece, because can we say that's enough health, I was going to say PE, for, for our students, for their, for their entire career? Maybe not, but where else is it embedded K through five and science and biology, right? Different courses where we can embed and interweave some of those heavy topics into those other courses. Um that's how we've been trying to be creative with it, in terms of even being creative with our course offerings, our master scheduling, our staffings, all of those things. So we're really just making sure that we're at least, at the very least, in compliance with Part one hundred regulations.
Um final question, feels like jeopardy. Do you, do you believe that it would be more beneficial for students in not just learning it, but also maintaining that knowledge if they had more consistency for health in between seventh and eleventh?
Are you asking me, me, me?
Yes.
Um I'm the daughter of a retired health and PE teacher, so my perspective may be a little bit different than other people's perspectives. Um but I was fortunate enough to have an educator as a mother too, who had those conversations and those things with us at home. Um and had that social capital as well. Um I think we have to be creative if we aren't offering it every year to students. Again, how are we embedding it into instruction throughout the child's career, their high school career, their their school career, basically? So I think that's, that's where the, not even the challenge, now I don't even know if that's a gap, well, it could be considered a gap per se. But that's where the creativity comes into um the curriculum that we have, how we're using, um how we're doing the cross-curricular pieces, um how we're collaborating with our colleagues and other, you know, departments and stuff like that. So those conversations have to be continuous. I know there's a big lift with that with the SEL piece too, so there is that cross collaboration even with student support services and how that shows up in, you know, our second step and all those other programs that we're doing. Um how does it show up in our extended school programs with Gear Up or, you know, the Boys Twenty First Century? So we have to be very um intentional about the spaces and how we have those things show up until we can get to, uh you know, if we decide as a district to do, go beyond what the state requires. But that would be a district decision.
And just to add a piece to that, it's just like um, you know, doing any exploratory uh work. So we're taking surveys and maybe we move from just doing Gen Ed, which can kind of get boring because the the things kind of follow in order, but maybe we get more specific into it. So maybe we can do a human and anatomy class, you know, these are all ideas that we can throw out there, which we do have, but we can augment that as well. So I think anything that we do, we can add to it and we can add our own possessive flair to it. So this makes Schenectady special, because if you go to some neighboring districts, they just give you gen, 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 gen and that's it. There's never any, you know, clear steps or hey, there's a branch this way or a path that way. So we can be creative as we want. I I want to make sure that the kids are insulated and surrounded by what they need to know. And if there's a a real need to know more and specific more, we just need to find a pathway to do it productively.
I do wanna take a moment to see if any of the SDRs, because we have four here today. If you have any additional questions, because I think it would be great, and if you don't have right now, I can come back to you at the end. Okay, do you have any questions?
No.
You're okay for that?
I can knock on my door, they'll pass me every day, don't stop.
Okay, okay, so we're gonna continue with Board Member Vivian.
Um I know you said that you were vetting the HealthSmart curriculum. So in your opinion, is there any room for us to explore the option of having additional course offerings other than seventh and eleventh grade, even if it were just four or a half semester?
That would be a tie-in question with multiple buildings, multiple admins, which I have no problem engaging in. I'll say anything can happen as long as it's collaborative. And if it comes from my, you know, has to come from this brain trust, which you, CTE. But um what I am saying is that I would definitely work and survey with the students. We'll figure out what they want to know and then we'll try to augment that way. We're doing the same thing with a uh sports marketing class that we're trying to add to the PE and health curriculum and working with Dave Preston, trying to figure out, can we get credits for that? I'm working, I'm working.
We're doing a lot of exploring, a lot of cross-curricular things and especially, especially as we're building and expanding our secondary programming and those experiences, and then what do those experiences look like at the middle school to prepare students for that high school experience? There's a lot of moving parts.
And I would also share, I mean, as we look to the concept of the CDs, our campus and the pathways, so helping public safety or conversations and whatever, based on our leadership communities, kind of seeing how we connect those dots and provide those supports and resources.
I do have an I wonder though, right, because I know you mentioned this cross-curricular, which I think is amazing. But I'm wondering if I were a student and I was asking a really sensitive question, like very, you know, very sensitive. I don't wanna give an example right now. Do we feel that our teachers are confident and secure in making those, in answering those questions in this space at this point?
What I would say is a lot of teachers, because there's been sort of a vacancy, they've reached out to me even with specifics, I'm more than happy to engage with that as well. Um one of the things I always do is say, try to tie in a secondary person, whether that be a school counselor, whether that be any of the other wonderful departments we have around here, um even some of my RP's has had those conversations. So, well, not mine, but ours. But um I I think that the way they're going about it is they just want some direction and leadership and kids have real legit questions. I often push back to say, like, give them the answers they require, don't engage even further. Just because we're gonna give respects to parents, we're gonna give respects to religious beliefs, whatever the case may be is, I'm giving you information, that's it. And then if you feel like you need to go a little bit more, then we have other ways we can put you in contact with a counselor. Uh you know, anybody that you feel comfortable with to share those, those uh ideas and goals and values about, uh or those questions. So we're, we're working to make sure that the kids are insulated and again, just giving them the information they need with sensitivity to all the other things that happen in the encompass.
Another question. So I do have another I wonder, right, um because we had um a public comment today in terms of um sharing that there are, I'm so paraphrasing this, so I'm adding my own stuff to this as well. But um and and I'm kind of, I'm listening to Janice and I know other students have had concerns about certain behaviors that are happening in our schools, right? And as um a person that came and commented, mentioned that we have a, an increase of STDs here in Schenectady. So my wonder, and I know you've been here like four months, six months, yeah. But my wonder is, um do we address those types of topics with, whether it's um interdisciplinary or at the health class? And that's specifically saying there's a huge STD, not in that sense, but I mean, do we have those deep conversations around STDs and about, you know, making wise choices, whatever that wise choice is? So that's my wonder.
I sat in with two classes over at Washington Irving, uh one was Anna Bruno's class and one was Aaron Kendricks' class.
Okay.
Um I think we deliver the information
Yeah.
as described, as you know, descriptive.
Yeah.
Uh we have pushed those topics, we have pushed, you know, safe sex, abstinence, I think. I even wanted the kids to ask like, whoa, what if I get this type of comment? No, 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 abstinence is one hundred percent foolproof. You play around with those if you want, but the case being that the kids will come to you with everything and our case is just to kind of rebuff them. I always stick to when in doubt, abstinence out. And that, those are real questions that come across, you know, and even just, you know, just being in the hallways and speaking to kids. They do, they will ask you questions that they feel like are connected to you. So I think being smart and not over saturating them with too much, just giving them spoon fed, spoon fed, spoon fed until something major comes along and then that's when we have those conversations. Hey, Jay, I had a kid who, so forth and so on, then we kind of surround that person with all the, all the supports they need. Exactly.
Thank you. I wanna circle around to see if any of the SDRs have any comments or questions. If not, that's okay.
I appreciate it.
I'd like to say that your health, I think the health curriculum is pretty effective, because I took health class last year as a tenth grader and pretty much all you've discussed were, was covered in that course and it was really helpful. Um shout out to Ms. Williamson, she was a great health teacher.
High five. High five.
Great uh teacher, she made everything fun. And also at the end of the year or throughout the year, every beginning of the class, she would make you write something that you had thought about, anything about, it was completely um anonymous and she would read it and if it was something serious, she would reach out to you. At the end of the year or a little bit before, she made you write like serious questions you had, well, not major, like if you wanted to. Um and you gave it to her and she would reach out to you personally, so I feel like the environment is.
Thank you. Definitely passing the words, and I won't say you.
SDR Stefan, do you feel, and just in general, not you, do you feel that the students were comfortable about having these conversations and asking questions?
Yes, because her herself was really nice and they've also had her before, I'm pretty sure, seventh grade. Um so they, they, they felt, we felt great, but like sharing stuff and asking questions about health.
Comment, um she's amazing, I know her personally. Um and and if we could clone her, that that would be um wonderful, because we, we are a district with thousands of students. Um and one of my concerns is capacity for the student body that we have. Um I I do believe it is a gap between seventh and eleventh grade. As someone who has a middle school student and someone who listens to middle school students talk, I am greatly concerned. Um happy that, you know, in the high school, like things are good. Things are not good in our middle schools, they're not. Um and even whatever goodness is happening in our high school, we know that there are other students that have additional support needs around health and wellness. Um that's a, yes, cross-curricular, absolutely, looking for ways that we can drop hints and information in all these different classes. Um but I, I think that we need more between that timeframe, given the the, the health and wellness that our students are not in a good space, right? Um there are so many of them. If we ever, you know, win the Lotto, I don't want the bare minimum. I don't want our babies to ever have the bare minimum for anything. I don't like our bare minimum for the food that we give them, which was the number one complaint in middle schools again this year. So looking for how we can make sure that, fine, we're good with New York State. How are we good with our children, that they have the support that they need for their health and wellness is, is critical for me. Until we can legally clone her, we gotta figure something else out. I say legally because, you know, it happens, but she.
And I do wanna say, we don't ever want the bare minimum for our kids, I do wanna be clear about that.
Yeah, absolutely.
But we weren't meeting standards in a lot of areas before I even got here. And so we had to do a lot of revamping just to meet those regulations. Um there are districts, and I've come from a district where we've had things like CFM was a required graduation for that district, even though it's not required. Career and financial management, I'm just giving an example. We made that a requirement of the district for graduation, even though it wasn't necessarily a state, New York State requirement. So those are conversations we could certainly have um as a OTL department, um as a cabinet with the superintendent about if that's something that we would look to do. And if that's what we look to do, then we will do it, so.
Thank you so much, thank you.
High five, thank you so much.
So now we're going to transition to the Planned Parenthood resolution. I moved to approve Greater New York Service Planned Parenthood Agreement. We'll start and we're gonna do a roll call for this one as well, so we'll start with Board Member Vivian this time. Um but first, may I have a motion? Sure. Thank you, Board Member Jamaica, second. Thank you, Board Member Kathy. Um and I think this is where the discussion may occur, any of the, uh further discussion? Yes. Vice President?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um so I'd like to take a moment um to explain like it's my decision um to vote against allowing Planned Parenthood to present in our buildings this evening. As a parent, my primary responsibility is to ensure the well-being and protection of my children. And as an elected board member, I feel equally dedicated to the family social benefits. My opposition to Planned Parenthood's presence stems from the legacy of its founder, Margaret Sanger. And for those of you who may not be aware, Sanger is known for her role in the birth control movement and is often regarded as a leader in reproductive health. However, I have significant philosophical concerns regarding her advocacy for eugenics, which is the belief that the human race can be improved through selective breeding. She promoted birth control to prevent the reproduction of individuals that she deemed unfit. Additionally, her involvement in the eugenics movement is exemplified by projects like the Negro Project, which aimed to promote birth control in black communities under pretense of improving health and economic conditions. By allowing this institution inside of our buildings, we seem to imply that our children need Planned Parenthood to enhance their reproductive health, which I do not agree with. I further question the necessity of their presence in our district. I have not observed Planned Parenthood in nearby districts such as Miss Kuna, Mohanistan, or Scotia Glenville. Similarly, liquor stores are not found on every corner of these neighborhoods either. This pattern of disinvestment and redlining historically affects predominantly black and brown communities, leading to negative outcomes. While I fully support providing reproductive health education to our children, I cannot, in the conscious, vote for an organization that is fundamentally rooted in ideologies that we do not endorse as a district. I recognize that Planned Parenthood of Greater New York has since publicly disavowed the beliefs of their founder and Margaret Sanger's name was removed in twenty twenty due to her association with uh eugenics. However, this does not erase the historical implications of her actions, nor does it clarify the need for the situation to be housed within our buildings when similar concerns exist in surrounding districts, not just Schenectady. For these reasons, I cannot vote in favor of their presence in our buildings. I remain committed to advocating for reproductive health education for our children in a manner that does not hold such significant historical implications.
Thank you, Vice President. Any other discussion?
Sure. Planned Parenthood was, was in our district for, I'm pretty sure, more than a decade. And the number of parents and students that had rave reviews for their relationship with them, for their advice, for their knowledge, I, I, I can't even begin to count. Planned Parenthood is the only organization in this country, and I've said it before and I'll say it again, that has done any form of reparations for the harm that their founder caused. If someone has some other organization that has done anything, including, there's a long list. They exist in communities and give support where needed, where others have abandoned them. They don't. I use Planned Parenthood myself. I never feel judged. I don't feel as if any questions aren't comfortable. And more so, they're presenting New York State-approved curriculum. This isn't Planned Parenthood curriculum. It's not Planned Parenthood coming in to do Planned Parenthood things. They are the vendor that is sharing the curriculum approved by New York State to a district that is in need. If other districts are in need and they are not doing everything they can for their children, shame on them. Shame on them for not looking for every single resource that they could use to make sure the health and well-being of their students is cared for. This organization, Planned Parenthood, has a horrible beginning. And I can't say enough times, they're doing the work to repair harm that no one else has. We talk about accountability and restorative practices. An organization that did harm acknowledged it, held itself accountable and then looks to repair that harm. They absolutely aligned with us as a district. I, anyone, please, find, find me an, another institution or organization that has caused harm to black folks that has given us any type of reparations. Any. They don't exist, except for Planned Parenthood. Seventh and eleventh grade, STI rates increasing. And the conversations that I hear sixth, seventh and eighth grade girls having, absolutely terrifying. So I understand the history, done all the research on the history and I will stand ten toes down for the only organization that has held itself accountable and continues every single day to pay reparations and to characterize or compare Planned Parenthood to and to characterize or compare Planned Parenthood to liquor stores that are on corners, deeply disturbs me. Because there is no comparison between those that are trying to help us and the stores that are bleeding our communities dry and not investing in them. That is all.
Thank you, Board Member Jamaica, Board Member Miranda, and then Board Member Vivian.
So, I didn't focus as much on the history, um, as much as I did what was, like, given to us as part of the, uh, Planned Parenthood curriculum that would be used if we did pass this resolution. And a lot of it, a lot of it was pretty what you would expect in a sexual education class. But it goes, in my opinion, I'll preface that, in my opinion, it goes so much further beyond what the child just needs to know. Um, and, you know, we talk a lot about how much we, we love our students and how a lot of times we think of them as a family, like, we just, you always wanna be the best for your family. As, and as I'm reading through this, you know, these examples and these role-play examples where they would expect two students to have this conversation, I could not imagine using these words to educate my daughter. Um, and I wrote some of them down, I'm gonna warn you, it's probably gonna make a lot of you feel uncomfortable, and it should. So, this is taken exactly from, right out of one of the modules that was sent to us as part of the Planned Parenthood curriculum. Um, so, this was going around, like, what do you do if your partner's saying, "I don't like how condoms feel"? And then, and the response was, "Well, I can show you how to make them feel better." It gets worse. Um, condoms kill the mood for sex. Well, the response was, "Only if you let them, with a little imagination, condoms can make it better." Or, there was an alternate response, "Let me show you that it doesn't kill the mood." Um, another excuse, "When I stop to put it on the condom, I'll lose my erection." The response, "Don't worry, I'll help you get it back." This goes so much further past sex education. This, it, they, they use the word spontaneity, I don't even know how many times, I probably couldn't count. If you go on their website and go to the teen help section, I mean, this is probably, the information that they provide on there would probably save a lot of marriages. The way that they talk about spontaneity, how to make it feel good, use lube, these are all things that this company is putting out there to teenagers. So, do I agree, maybe health education needs to be spread out a little bit more, a bigger focus, help prevent STDs, absolutely. Do I think Planned Parenthood is the best way to do that? Absolutely not. It sounded like the presentation we had today, they have a good plan, they have a good curriculum, they found something that's more in line with New York State, and that's, I'll just sum it up there. I know I've talked for a while, I don't know if I've been beyond three minutes.
That's okay.
I have a question. Um, you said, so, I just want for clarity. You mentioned the language in the module, but then you mentioned the website. So, is the website from the company different than the module that Planned Parenthood would be presenting? Cause I just, I'm, I'm not sure if you were talking about them the same, are they two separate things?
Well, they're both from Planned Parenthood. One is the module that would be given, I don't know if it would be someone from Planned Parenthood teaching, or if that would be given to a health teacher as a guide, a recommendation to, to spark conversation in the class. Um, the other one is just Planned Parenthood's website. When you go on, if you were a teenager, who's going on to look for help, you're curious, you wanna know, to get into talking about the spontaneity and how to make it feel good, in my opinion, is going beyond teaching them about abstinence or safe sex.
So, the module was the language about the, if, if, if a partner didn't wanna put on a condom, here are things that you could say to get them to put on the condom, that was in the module.
That was in the module, and they also talked about spontaneity in the module.
For what grade?
The modules that were sent to us as an example of what would be taught in the classes. It didn't say what grade, it just said the module.
Well, I, I think it's important to know what grade, because, um, seventeen and eighteen-year-olds are having those conversations, children younger than that are having those conversations and are engaging in sex. So, if there is a module that's giving examples when a young person is looking to be sexually active and how to ensure that they practice safe sex, if they are put under pressure to not practice safe sex?
It's going beyond what to do to practice safe sex. Well, as soon as you start talking about spontaneity, um, this, one of the examples was, uh, using a sponge as a method, not like any sponge, but a sponge as a method of contraception, and basically saying, hang on, I wrote it down here, um, that.
The vaginal sponge.
Yeah, um. Let's see, oh, so that, yeah, the sponge allows for more flexibility and spontaneity with sex. This is encouraging sexual behavior. It's besides the point, if kids are gonna do what kids are gonna do. But we also don't wanna normalize it and make it seem like, yes, this is totally okay, just use a condom, just use a sponge, no, abstinence is best. Yes, if you're gonna do it, a condom will prevent pregnancy, a condom will prevent STDs most of the time. But the best way to avoid all of that is to abstain. So, the fact that these words are used as a guide to be taught to our students, whether you're in seventh grade or eleventh grade, I personally don't care. This is going beyond the school district's purview of sex education and grooming them and teaching them how to have sex and how to be more spontaneous, using lube to make sure that it feels more pleasurable in the, cause the condom doesn't feel good. That's just too much.
So, so, again, like, not knowing the difference between what you're reading when it's the module versus when it's on the website?
This is all the module.
Okay, and that, um, the word spontaneity that seems to, to be an issue for you, I'm just trying to make sure I understand.
Yeah, one of many, but yes.
That, the way I heard it was educating students that if there's a chance that they might have sex and they want to prevent being pregnant, that that particular method allows for it to be present ahead of time, right? So, it's an edge.
Again, you're encouraging sexual behavior when you should be encouraging students, children, to not partake in sexual activities.
Doesn't our current policy allow for parents to opt out? Right?
Yeah.
So, that you as a parent would, would be able to opt out, like.
It doesn't mean that we should be teaching our students this stuff.
You, you disagree and don't want someone else teaching.
I think this is just gonna be something we're gonna have to agree to, agree on.
Your children don't want, your, would not want, cause your children aren't old enough yet, but you would not want your children to be taught this, you would have the option of opting out in, instead of the module that is approved by New York State Department of Education. So, when you talk about being in line with the New York State Department of Education.
Oh, I'm not sure if the module is, the wording is approved, but the curriculum would be approved.
I do wanna interject, cause we, we have it, and it doesn't say a grade level, actually. We don't, we can't find it, but, um, to, so, this is some of the language again, kinda, you know, so, it's, so, this one is Module Six, it says, "Breaking the Mood Excuses." Excuse, condoms kill the mood for sex, response, "Only if you let them. With a little imagination, condoms can actually make it better." Or, response, "Let me show you that it doesn't have to kill the mood." Um, and there's a lot, I mean, there are all these modules, but it doesn't, we can't find the grade level, cause you have it too, we can't find the grade level, to your question, but, yeah, it's interesting.
I al, I also, sorry, just really, really quickly, um, I think the one thing, and I'm, I'm gonna defer, I'm gonna defer to, um, uh, Assistant Superintendent, um, DiCaprio, um, I don't know if Dr. Chesley's still in the room. I know we talked about this pretty extensively at policy meetings in regards to the opt-out option. That is only for HIV and AIDS education, correct? It's not for any other. So, parents cannot opt out of.
That's adopted in policy, correct?
Okay.
Okay.
I do, um, to address a couple of things. First and foremost, we, as a school district, very readily and quite frequently put emphasis on the past atrocities, um, that people of color in this country have suffered. However, what I find very disturbing is just because Planned Parenthood issued an apology in 2020 for atrocities, and now they're being given a pass. Mind you, prior to that apology, Planned Parenthood as an organization as a whole has always publicly denied any ties or any comments of criticizing Planned Parenthood and their ties to Margaret Sanger's beliefs in eugenics. They have always been pooh-poohed, they were always denied vehemently. Then George Floyd was murdered. Then, a few months after he was murdered, Planned Parenthood apologizes for the connection to eugenics and the horrible impact that has, um, affected the African-American community in this country that still impacts our community to this day. So, let's not pretend that that apology was not politically motivated. And I find this selective outrage to be quite disturbing. In addition to that, let's not also forget that their negative impact on our community still stands. Um, VP Nohalani, I would not liken them to a liquor store on every corner, I would liken them to something much worse. Let's not forget the fact that the African-American population in this country over the last several decades has not grown. We're the only population in this country that has not grown, we stagnated over the last several decades. And Planned Parenthood has had a direct, direct hand in that. Let's not forget this. So, for all of our talks about diversity and inclusion and equality, we wanna give Planned Parenthood a pass, even though they have had a direct hand in, because that was their mission statement of the annihilation of the African-American population in this country. Let's not forget that the very first Planned Parenthood that was opened up in Harlem was strategically put there because of the heavy African-American population in that area. And they have followed to do with that mission today. You still see Planned Parenthood clinics primarily in African-American neighborhoods. You don't see them in Saratoga, you don't see them in Iskuna, you don't see them in Clifton Park. They're in predominantly black and brown neighborhoods. So, for all the apologies that they gave, they're not living to that apology because the practices have not changed. Number two, concerning the curriculum, I don't say anything without receipts. Red light behaviors to include vaginal sex without a condom, anal sex without a condom. I went to a party, I had a couple of beers, and then someone handed me a joint. The next thing I knew was I was in the bedroom with this basketball player I kinda had a thing for. We ended up having sex, and I don't even know if we used a condom, because I was so high that I forgot to ask. I heard he does this type of thing a lot, page 111. Uh, role-playing, Linda and Jared, the goal of this role-play for Linda is for Linda to convince Jared to use a condom and to demonstrate that condoms can be fun and pleasurable, page 178. The, uh, role-play between Rosa and Regine, the goal of this role-play is for Rosa to persuade Regine not to have sex or wait until sober before getting involved in a sexual relationship, page 182. Uh, remember to talk about how condoms are fun and pleasurable. Once you both agree to use condoms, do something positive and fun. Go to the store or clinic together, get different types of colors. Plan a special day when you can experiment, page 187. Uh, let me see, uh, anal sex with a condom is considered yellow or red light behavior. Anal sex without a condom is considered red light behavior. In addition, if you choose to have vaginal or anal sex, use a condom, that's the proud and responsible thing to do. People engage in sexual activities for a variety of reasons, including sexual enjoyment. Hedonistic considerations may influence key outcome expectancies during sexual experiences. For example, many people believe that condoms reduce physical sensations during sexual activity or ruin the mood, and therefore are less likely to use condoms during sexual intercourse, page seven. Other things can lead to intimacy and orgasm without risking getting pregnant or infected with HIV or another STD, page 109. So, I firmly stand with the assessment that this goes far beyond the mechanics of safe sex practices. While brainstorming how to make condom use more pleasurable, the facilitator says, "Add the following ideas to the brainstorm list if they weren't mentioned by participants. Use extra lubrication, use condoms as a method of foreplay, use different colors and types and textures, some have rips on them. Think up a sexual fantasy using condoms. Tell your partner how using a condom can make a man last longer. Act sexy and sensual when putting the condom on. If a male loses his, oh, I apologize, page 155. If a male loses his erection after putting on a condom and before intercourse, what could the couple do? Answer, this will happen to most males at some point in their lives. Have partner take off condom, continue playing and stimulating each other, relax and enjoy the fun, after a while, put on a new condom as part of the play." Page 163. Why is this necessary for our minority children? Why? And this is directly from the Be Proud, Be Responsible curriculum that Planned Parenthood not only implements, but has had a direct hand in creating said curriculum with CICUS. So, it's not, it is their curriculum, they have had a hand in it, and this is why they pushed it. So, no one here disagrees with the fact that our children need information for them to make responsible and safe choices. Nobody at this table is, is insinuating that. But it gets to a point where, when we're going beyond what is necessary and we're touching into areas that violate our children's rights to remain children and to be innocent, that is not our responsibility, that is not our role, it's not our job. And we are stepping into the role of a parent, regardless of whether there was an opt-out form or not. We are still sanctioning sexually explicit content for minor children. And I'm going to say that this type of content, and we are sanctioning this content for our students, whether their parent have the option to opt them out or not, this is grooming behavior. Because we are exposing our children to information that they do not need at this stage in their lives. Why, what is the problem with allowing our children to actually be children? What is the problem with that? Give them the information that they need. They don't need instruction on how to improve foreplay. I'm sorry, that's grooming.
I would love for our children to just be children. They're not, and they're not for a whole host of reasons. The way that they're over-sexualized by the media and by a whole host of other things. And two in which they then try to act like they're older, that they engage in sexual acts. And us being outraged that that conversation could potentially happen as opposed to those things are happening with children easily as young as 14. And I'm being kind, absolutely our high school students, that there's alcohol, there are drugs, sex is happening with and without condoms, those conversations are happening. Are children being prepared for, to, to be able to have that conversation? Cause what I've said to my daughter is, if you can't say penis and vagina, then we know you shouldn't be having sex. They're having those conversations anyways, in middle school and in high school. And they're talking about the things that they wanna do to each other without understanding the consequences, without being aware that this condom sponges, what it feels like. The correlation versus causation, I wanna get back to the idea that Planned Parenthood single-handedly, by itself, has demolished the population of black folks.
That's not what I said, don't put words on it, no, that's not what I said.
You said that, that, that African-Americans, that significant, significant.
Call order?
Significant, significant, as if it's the only thing that has impacted black life in this country. And then, that practices have not changed. What practices have not changed from Planned Parenthood? That they're still doing eugenics? Well, no, you said their practices have not changed, there's a lot of practices inside Planned Parenthood.
Good to call the question.
Okay, so, I think we're ready to vote. Before we do that, I do wanna give the SBRs another opportunity to see if they have any comments or anything they wanna share, and if not, that's okay. All right, I know this is a really tough conversation and it's very, um, passionate conversation as well. So, um, let's take a vote, we're gonna do a roll call, and I'm gonna go this way. All right, so, let's start with Board Member Jamaica.
Aye.
Okay, all, so, all in favor, aye, Jamaica? Right, all in favor? Aye, Jamaica. Kathy?
Aye.
Amanda?
Nein.
Nein.
It is very tough for me, I'm gonna be honest, and I don't, it's very tough because I see both sides and when you hear and you see the information that is provided, it is, it is concerning, right? But at the same time, when I hear the other side, right, that we have students, and when I heard some of what you said, some of the, or what Janice said, but also students about the need to have more conversations around this. But at the same time, then we had the presentation that shared that there's gonna be, there could possibly be more conversations. So in saying that, I'm gonna say yea, however, that's a tie. So the motion to approve the Greater New York Service resolution fails. I do want to thank all board members, because you are very transparent with your feelings, with your opinions, with your viewpoints, and that's really important for the community to hear. This resolution was supposed to be for a year. So in the future, if other, you know, if we hear, if we have another health, and we will, health presentation, if there are, you know, if we have further questions to see how things are rolling out, we definitely can have another conversation, which I think we probably will need. Okay, but thank you to all, because I know this was not an easy conversation. So thank you, thank you very much.
I have a question regarding resolutions and policies, just for the, the general public to know. How is it decided when something comes to the floor for a vote, how many people have to, is it just you? And again, I'm saying this so the general public knows how things can be brought for a vote.
To the agenda, as an agenda?
Yes.
So there are several ways. So board, so what initially happens is that the board, all of you, you share with me topics that you want to be put on the agenda. This is usually in June or July. So from that, and then also topics like, this topic was, has been a hot topic. So I will, I jot this down, actually, and then that's something that might be put on the agenda. I send it to you all before I have a conversation with the superintendent to see if those agenda items are agenda items that you want to see on there. Now, that's one. Okay, we're good with that one? Okay, so the other piece is that what happens, and we have this in the policy. So let's say that Amanda says she wants to have a topic around health. And then VP Nohalani seconds it, then that, we can put that on the agenda if there's two people. So that's another way. Then the other, what happened this year that normally does not happen is that we had a lot of concerns around the safety because of the fights that happened at the beginning of the year. So then I did, I think, I reached out to all of you, and I asked you if you wanted, if you were okay to have some conversations about the weapons detection, things like that. So I mentioned three things. So three, the first one is that we all collectively, you share with me topics that you want on the agenda. I meet with Superintendent Cotto, and it becomes an agenda piece. The second part, the second, and I'm not doing this in order. Board members say, Vivian says, "I want this." Then let's say Jamaica, you second it, then it gets on the, on the agenda. But then this year, because they were hot topics, like really hot topics, not only the community, but many of you, I called you individually and I asked you, do you, is it okay for us to have conversations around this because it wasn't on the agenda? So I hope that helps, okay? Thank you, and thank you for asking that, because I think it's important for the community to know as well, okay? We're good? All right, so we have a second opportunity for comments from the public or board members. I do want to mention two things. The JROTC, they were in Newburgh several weeks ago, and they had the competition. And SBR Janice and SBR Joyce were there, and I had the pleasure of going. It was awesome. It was amazing to see them in action. And also to see her, she was the leader, SBR Janice. So I appreciate that. And also a few of us, I think it was Assistant Superintendent DiCaprio and Executive Director Tia. We were at Lincoln, and we read to the little ones, and that was a lot of fun, too, so I wanted to mention those two things.
Just yesterday, me, Joyce, and our core commander of the ROTC program, we went on a field trip for Twenty First Century to the New York State Capitol. And what mainly was talked about was after-school budgets. And something that was announced that, you guys probably know this, but the $100 million for, that's coming out, I think April 1st. I was just really proud to be there for that moment. It was, it was a really, really experience.
Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
I'd like to just do a couple shout-outs. Central Park, all three of our middle schools competed in the What's, What's So Cool About Manufacturing, and Central Park did win an award just this past week. So just a shout-out again. Also want to let the community know that our Lern2Swim program will be up and running again, starting in April. Huge success, elements your middle. Okay, so we will work on our high school as well as our families. And just also letting the community know that we are doing informational sessions for our eighth graders that are transitioning into high school. We just had Mount Pleasant's informational session yesterday, I believe. And then in April, we'll have both Central Park and Oneida. And then last, I think when it comes to the chat with the superintendent, in April, we will have our CFO in that space to just start to engage the community around the budget to kind of filter any questions.
Thank you, Superintendent. So the board will now enter into executive discussion session to discuss a legal matter with counsel and security measures. So may I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Board Member Amanda, second.
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Vivian. Any other discussion, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
A vote. Okay, have a good evening, everyone.